All right, good evening, folks. It is, I'm going to call it 7:05 PM. We're in the National North Boardroom. And tonight, we're having our regular Board of Education meeting. Mr. Guarino, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mr. Mosher is joining us by phone. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
I certainly am.
Thank you. Ms. Van Thuyver is not here tonight. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Hoensie?
Present.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Timmons is joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself tonight, Ms. Timmons?
No, but I have E-Buzz on.
Okay. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Okay. Also attendees, Dr. Mosley. We have Ms. O'Gara.
Here.
And Dr. McKinney.
Here.
And Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
We also have Mr. Ead.
Here.
And Ms. Scales.
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. If you could, please, lead us in the prayer. And Ms. Porter, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Okay. I just want to tell people in the audience that participation in the prayer is completely voluntary. The National Board of Education does not endorse any specific religion or force anyone to participate. And so, it's completely voluntary.
Thank you.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of our fellow citizens. Amen.
My pledge to the leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So, I do have a couple slight changes to the agenda. Instead of the introduction to the ELL communication specialist, that is not available for this evening, so I'd like to have the Niasq presentation from the high schools first. Do we have any objections on the board? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Richard, are you first, or Mr. Burns?
(laughing).
That's very chivalrous of you, Mr. Burns.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. So, just wanted to update everybody where we are in the Niasq process. As you know, we had our visit in March 2018, and we had a special report to do, which was due September 1, which I think you've all have in your packet, or I think I saw it in part of the attachments with the agenda. The next part would be a two-year report and a five-year report. So, as you, I hope you guys look through it, some pretty standard recommendations that they made that we needed to respond to. I'll be honest, the strategic plan could not have come at a better time. Many of my responses reflected back to the strategic plan, because in this response, it was not what we are doing, it's what we planned to do. So, come up with a timeline for how will you address this or that. So, unless there are any specific questions, you know, please let me know. But, pretty clear, pretty, actually, you know, short and to the point is what they were looking for here, not huge narrative. They just want to make sure that we are thinking of these recommendations and make sure that we're creating a plan to move forward. When we get to the two-year progress report, I think there they'll be looking for more of what have we done? So, some evidence of what we've done, and how do we continue forward? The five-year report is kind of at that midway point, to make sure we're on task. And then, at the 10-year mark, we would have a new visit.
Okay. Thank you. Did any members of the board have a question? Okay, Mr. Kaufman? Oh, your name tags are backwards.
Thank you.
You know, in case I get confused.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richard. So, on page 14, the heading is School and Community Summary. And this is a really excellent demographic summary and an overview of the district.
I just brought my special progress report. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the north one.
Okay. He's on deck.
Okay. My apology. My apology.
Okay. Anybody else regarding South's update to the Niasq? Oh, Ms. Porter?
It was great to see the strategic plan in there. And it was really nice, after having worked on it, to see how it really fit in with what you were doing. So, that was good timing, you're right, and great to see. I'm sure that Dr. Mosley was happy to see that as well. So, thank you.
Great.
Can't wait to hear how it goes.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much, Mr. Richard, for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Burns. Your report is somewhat more lengthy than Mr. Richard.
Definitely. All right. Thank you for having me this evening as well. So, I figured I would start by just going through the process and reviewing what we did over the last 18 months or so prior to this. So, our visit was in December. But, prior to that, we had a self-study that we began, with a survey, and took in a lot of information. Our teachers looked at all of the seven standards and worked together to create a report. Our visiting team came in the beginning of December and kind of tried to assess to see if we did our due diligence, and if we were missing anything, and tried to confirm our findings. From there, the chair worked on the report and wrote conclusions for each of the seven standards. And then, they provided commendations and recommendations in each of the different areas. During the summer, the Niasq commission met. They reviewed the report, and then they voted to determine whether or not we received accreditation or continued accreditation. And we did get the continued accreditation. And then, from there, like Mr. Richard said, there's different various reports that you need to write up at certain times. So, much like South, we do have a one-year special report that we need to do. Ours is based on our implementation of the core values and beliefs for the school. We saw that coming as part of it, with a lot of the changes that were taking place here at the school. We didn't really do a lot of the work developing our core values prior to the visit, and we cited that throughout. And, you know, it came back that way. So, we're working on developing a plan to remedy that. And then, we'll have our two-year progress report, a five-year report, and move forward from there. Much like my special reports do in February, so we're beginning to have those conversations now, as far as how we can work to develop those core values and get them implemented within the classroom and be used. We also have a lot of work going with the vision of the graduate. So, we recently started some work, going to a couple different visits, and had a couple of conferences that we've attended. And that's going to be part of that core value and belief system in developing our goals as we move forward. I can go through some of the highlights that you might see, or some of the things that the chair pointed out as they were there. One of the big things was the development of our school-wide rubrics to assess our 21st century skills. They talked a lot about the leadership of the faculty and initiating the process of identifying the core values and beliefs. But again, we have to go back to, like I said, implementing those pieces. Our opportunities that we have for students, co-curricular, extracurricular, the rubrics that we've developed for competency-based grading, use of our competency-based report card, collection and disaggregation of data, the safe, positive, and respectful school culture, the leadership team increased visibility across the campus, the student involvement in making decisions, and our strong relationships between counselors, special educators, support staff, and our students, to highlight a few of them. As far as some of the recommendations, one of the big things is looking at revising our curriculum to include the 21st century learning expectations. So, we currently have those, but they're not necessarily in our day-to-day activities or in our day-to-day lessons. So, it's looking at that. And a big piece of that falls within the vision of graduate and within the strategic plan as well. Ensuring our technology is up to par. We had, again, have already taken steps to address that. Our Wi-Fi is working a lot better. I hope you've noticed that in here as well. But, we had, I think, another 25 devices and a lot of movement in the building. So, it was great as well to see. Big piece is looking at developing a plan to implement and align our curriculum. We've begun that work as well, and have had conversations with our leadership teams at both North and South. And then, developing our common assessments, student assessments, common rubrics, continuing to do a lot of that work. And then, one of the bigger needs, too, is addressing the needs of our ELL population. So, we actually added a teacher and a half here for ELL this year, which is great for our students. Still, I think we need more, but we're moving in the right direction, which is great to see. So, that's about it as far as what I've prepared, but I'm more than willing to talk about any questions or answer any questions you may have, or talk more about the visit.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Burns. How are you?
Good.
Well done. You know, I think you've got a handle. You know where you're going. That's what we want to hear.
That's the hope.
Right?
Got good people around, and we've got a plan in place.
Right. I just want to have a question about page 14. The topic is School and Community Summary. And in it is a very brief, yet focused statement as to the demographics of the district, mentions the number of schools we have, and things like that. This is the kind of information that I was looking for in the strategic plan that never made it there when I talked about demographic data and an introduction to the school. But, I'm curious what the source is of this information. Did Niasq provide it? Did they author this section? Or did the school prepare this? Did we provide it to them and they included it? I'm just trying to understand who the source is of this information.
Yeah, so this is data probably pulled mostly from, so our faculty and staff, as they write the report, provides this information and gets the numbers, so that we gather it through X2 data, we gather it through data at the state, you know, on the DOE website. So, there's lots of different sources to that. But, mostly, we provide them with that information, and then they, a lot of times, in this report, kind of regurgitate some of the information that we provide to them.
Okay. So, I would ask the administration, can you please, maybe it's just this single page, where this brief section be included in the documentation of the strategic plan? Because this is the, when I was asking for demographic data, here it is on one page. But, we don't have this kind of information in the plan. So, if necessary, I'm prepared to make a motion, or can that just be done?
Yes, Ms. Porter?
That sounds like it would be in the appendices and it would...
Yes, as an appendix.
And it wouldn't need a motion. That can just be put in there, because we didn't vote on the appendices. We voted on the...
I'm fine with that. I just want to ask that it be included, because it's extremely valuable and helpful.
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you. It's not the full enrollment data, that's still, you know, I'd like to see, but this is terrific. Thank you very much.
Problem. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions for Mr. Burns, or comments on the Niasq review?
Can I just ask one last thing?
Yes.
I'm just curious what the student response is to something like that, because they have a parade of people, it goes on for a few days, they know something's going on. But, I'm just curious, is there, do you brief the students, the student senate? Are they in the loop? I'm just curious what your student experience is around it.
Yeah, so we did have, we had students come down during E-Block, and we talked to them during the week leading up. Some of our students were shadowed over those three days, where they met with the faculty and staff. I can't remember if Jamila Shanti was one of the ones that got shadowed, or if she was questioned or anything. But, we had a group of about 20 students that were. We had our JROTC students were showing, or giving tours. We had students that were coming out and about and meeting with them on a variety of committees and answering questions. Everybody kind of enjoyed. I think everybody knew what was going on, and it went pretty well. So, I don't know if Jamila Shanti wants to speak to that piece, too, or not. Sorry, I know, putting you on the spot.
So, let's give Ms. Scales a moment.
Yes, actually, I remember. It was last school year, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it actually went really well, I thought. A lot of us JROTC kids, I was one of the JROTC kids that volunteered last year. It looked like it was very productive, and it was a good turnout. So, yeah.
And we had some students that showed up the day before on a Sunday, gave up their own free time to be here as well, and that was great. And some parents and community members came as well. So, it was nice to see people coming and supporting the building and then the school.
Okay, great. Mr. Ead?
And there was also groups like Student Voice at South. They were showing, they were giving Niasq a show of some of the great clubs at the high schools.
Yes, I remember that. Here as well, there was like a fair almost in the hallways. That was wonderful. And culinary did a fantastic job, as usual.
It was amazing food.
Not that I focus on cookies or anything. Okay. So, did anyone else have a comment or a question for Mr. Burns? No? All right. I just wanted to commend your staff. The commendations in here were just wonderful. Each commendation talked about the dynamic teaching methods that our staff, I'm saying ours if I have any responsibility for it, but that your staff are using. And they talked about the staff being knowledgeable, the staff being prepared, and the staff using real-world instruction and altering their instruction to meet the students' needs. And I was just really, really pleased to read that over and over again in this report.
Yeah, I think that really came out, and, you know, I'm really happy with the faculty that we have here. They're amazing people, and they work really hard for our kids, so.
Yep. So, kudos to all of you. I was very excited.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming this evening.
Have a great night.
Thanks. Okay. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. But, I would like to change the rules and have an item of new business on first, and that's the Special Education Compliance Update. Ms. Bagley was kind enough to come down this evening, but she has another commitment. So, I would like to have her come and do her presentation, so she doesn't have to leave before we get there. Does anyone have an objection to that change in the agenda? I see everyone shaking their heads no. So, Ms. Bagley, if you're ready? It's a green light on? Okay.
It is now.
Thank you. So, there was some question about our special education compliance, and there was, I guess, some question about charter schools and how we interact with them regarding special education services.
Sure. So, included in your packet was the Compliance and Improvement Monitoring Full Report that we received from the Department of Education. I forgot to send with it the closeout letter, so I do have a copy of that.
Yes, please.
So, this was sent to us in October of 2018, when we finished the Compliance and Improvement Monitoring System, or Event, I should say. So, I'll just give you a brief rundown about how Compliance and Improvement Monitoring works in New Hampshire. We were selected due to our cohort size, the DOE, and it's all explained in the packet that was sent. But, the DOE assigns, or divides the state up into cohort sizes depending upon the enrollment size of the district. So, we are in the cohort with very few other school districts because of our size. So, we fall into Cohort 1 in New Hampshire. The DOE uses five indicators to assign points, and the lower the point value, the better it is. We strive for zero points. And they also look at substantiated special ed complaints that have been received. So, the districts receiving the highest point value within that cohort are selected to go through this process. So, we were selected for the 2017-18 school year, and we will not be selected again for another five years. If, and if we don't, if we have zero points, chances are that we will not be selected during that five-year cycle as well. So, the next time we could potentially go through this process again would be the 2023-2024 school year.
Okay.
So, we started the process in November of 2017, so I misspoke, I'm sorry. It was the 2016-17 school year. Was that right? No, 1718.
Yeah, it says 1718 on the top of the report.
And so, we finished in October of 2018, which, for a district our size, you'll see in the closeout letter, is pretty much unheard of. We were able to correct all our findings of non-compliance in the amount of time that was provided. We have a year from the date of the report. The report was given to us in January of 2018, and we finished in October. So, I think that we did pretty well with that. So, the intent of Compliance and Improvement Monitoring is to improve the student outcomes for identified students. And at the bottom of page 2 in the big report, you'll see the, it lists, there's three bullet points that, how we're expected to improve student...
Yes, I see. Okay.
Do you see that? Okay. So, this was a really big undertaking. The DOE sent us 91 student names. We didn't know who would be selected when they came for their onsite visit. And the onsite visit was a team of people from the Department of Ed, as well as visiting members, other administrators from other districts, who came in and reviewed files to ensure compliance. And there were several areas that they looked for. It was a very big, three-day event. We had people across the district. And prior to the onsite, the Department of Ed and the special ed administrative team provided targeted professional development to our staff regarding the different components that would be looked at. We had to review our special ed procedures and forms. We had to create some. We had to revise some of them. We had to change some of our practices. And so, the DOE had met with us and provided us all that information. When they came and they collected all of the information, reviewed all of the students' files, reviewed our procedures and paperwork, there were two different areas of non-compliance findings, either student-specific or systematic non-compliance that needed to be corrected. And on page 11 is where it starts outlining the specific non-compliance findings. But, they all fell into the categories of either evaluations and the requirements around...
Oops, someone's pressing buttons.
The requirements around evaluations, written prior notices, which is the most important document that we have in special education, and IEP requirements. And there's, an IEP is a very lengthy, in-depth document, so there's many pieces to the IEP. But, those are the main areas that we found, we were found having issues with. So, as a result of the findings, there were several corrections that needed to be made for student-specific corrections that needed to be made to their IEPs. There are also practices that we needed to change in the district. So, we learned from this experience that we, as a special ed administrative team, need to provide more oversight and mentoring to our staff, including our building administrators, to help them better understand the process and the requirements for special education. We needed to have better communication with our staff across the district, which is not an easy feat, given the size of our district and how many staff we have. So, we changed some of our practices, and as you'll see in the closeout letter, by October, we met full compliance for the Department of Education. So, that's a nutshell for our Compliance and Improvement Monitoring.
Okay. Thank you. Did anyone have any questions for Ms. Bagley? Yes, Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. I've received information from some parents of charter schools. And apparently, since this audit, there's been changes on how special ed services are provided from the district to the charter schools. I guess they're wondering if it's the least restrictive environment to have them bussed, and then, the private services at the public school with peers that they're not normally going to school with. I think they express that as a concern, and also that they're losing 90 minutes a day between the busing and being out of class time. So, I'm just wondering, what were the metrics for making that decision? Is it cost savings? What did we save? Because I think in previous years, we, the district gave money to the charters, and they hired staff, so we didn't have to transport either teachers or students.
So, that practice changed this school year. Previously, we did contract with two charter schools, two specific charter schools, that has affected the change. But, due to various reasons, the model has changed, and I included its FY 13 memo number 10 from the Department of Ed that discusses how districts can provide services to students in charter schools. So, in order to have better oversight of our services that are being provided, the district chose to have the students come back to us for the services. It is one of the options for service delivery. As I'm sure you're aware, only parents can place children in charter schools. The district has no part of that discussion. But, however, we're still responsible for providing the services that are outlined in that IEP. And not all charter schools have special ed services available.
Right, right. We used to contribute towards that solution with contracts, as you mentioned. So, is it the, it's the oversight to make sure that we're in compliance for the next audit?
Yes.
So, we felt that just giving a contractor or hiring somebody there wouldn't resolve our duties in terms of oversight of those staff people, because they would be hiring them, as opposed to we are.
Right. So, the, all of the, all of the results of the Compliance and Improvement Monitoring showed that we need to have better oversight of the provision of all of our services. And we, if we have a contract with somebody, we can expect that they are performing the duties as outlined. However, my office has no supervision of the provider of those services. The people are not onsite. We don't see what's happening. There's a lot of documentation that's required, so.
How many of the 91 students that were, they were going to investigate were from the charter schools? I mean, were they some of the children they were cited in this audit that needed remediation?
They, they were some of the originally selected students.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I don't want to identify...
No, not me.
...how many students, because I'm concerned that a charter school may only have, say, one or two students receiving services, and then, they would be easily identifiable by people who attend that school. So, I don't want to get into numbers in a public forum where students could be identified that way.
I don't want the numbers. I just want to know that they were part of the situation that we're talking about.
Any student with an IEP was part, could have been one of the, those students who were going to be reviewed. So, we had students who were part of charter schools. We had students who were part of our out-of-district programs. Any students who have IEPs that we are financially responsible for can be part of this Compliance and Improvement Monitoring process and review.
Oh, even the ones that we transport upstate and all over? Have we changed many of those, our policy on...
No, because when we place a student in an out-of-district program, they are, they are special ed program approved by the state of New Hampshire. Charter schools do not fall under that.
Okay. So, it's that special ed approved by the state of New Hampshire. Thank you.
Okay. Did anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bagley, for your persistence in what you did in such a short period of time. I'm curious, you mentioned that 91 students were selected for an audit, if I can just call it that. I'm curious, given the experience of the audit and your improvement of the processes, did you then go back to the remainder of the IEPs to ensure that those specific ones that were not part of the audit received the same focus that those in the audit did receive? If I said that well enough, you'd understand me.
So, that's a very good question. We did not go back through all 2,000 IEPs.
Okay. So, that was another question, I was curious.
However, we have continued to provide very targeted professional development around the requirements. We, as an administrative team, have a much better handle on specifics that the Department of Education is expecting, specific language that is expected in an IEP. So, as we go through the process with teams writing IEPs, we ensure that the people who are acting as what we call LEAs, the administrators at the meeting, ensure that before we sign off on the IEPs, that language is in compliance with the Department of Ed's expectations.
So, I think, I'm going to paraphrase in a totally different way, but it seems to me that it's very fair to say that as the... me that it's very fair to say that as the IEPs go forward, the standards will be integrated and they'll just catch up as the IEPs are reviewed throughout the normal process, if I can call it that.
Yes.
I mean, because, and you did mention one other thing about professional development. That was a question I wrote down here. So is this, what's the extent of it? How, do you need extra time to bring people up to speed on the changes in procedures? Or is it just, just like the IEP is catching up through the normal, this is how we do them now, we have new protocols and, you know, familiarize them as they start and as you do it, you become more familiar, it becomes integrated into the process? I was just curious.
A little of both, but when we were going through the process, we had mandatory trainings that we had our special ed staff attend. As we've been going through and we have new hires come in, that is part of our special education, new teacher orientation. We've developed a case manager handbook based on all of this information that's available to people online. And, you know, we've developed, we've put into place processes and resources that are available to staff to seek out in order to continue to earn zeros on the Department of Education's compliance report.
Just a last comment. I want, you know, the anxiety that you must, okay, we're coming down, pull these 91 and folks and we're going to inspect them in great detail. And obviously, you folks handled it very well. You responded in a very prompt and timely manner. And I'm very pleased to hear how you've learned and taken it as a learning exercise and how you've, I'm particularly impressed with the PD that you just mentioned and the handbook. So it gives me assurance, I'm confident in what you're doing. And I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Oden?
I just want to thank you also. Having worked with IEPs from the classroom, we know, Ms. Porter's shaking her head, we know what's involved in it and how difficult and what a lot of work goes into it. So thank you so much. I can't imagine what that job was like that you had to, had to do. That's an awful lot. And I thank you for not only doing it, but doing so promptly. You must have stayed in the office a lot of nights.
At that point, Chris Breen was still the director.
Oh, okay.
So we worked, we worked very closely together to get everything done. And it was a big undertaking. It was a very big undertaking. But we, we got it done and the DOE was lovely to work with, so they were very helpful to us as well.
Thank you so much.
Well, that's good to hear. Ms. Porter?
Also want to mention the special ed teachers who were part of it because I know working with special ed teachers, what an enormous thing this is for them to do while they're doing their regular jobs.
Very true.
Yes, so kudos to them as well.
And me?
Yes, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, the complexities of running a school district between the special needs and IEPs and so on is something that a lot of people have no idea of what, what goes on to facilitate the education of their children. And I am continually amazed at the, the amount of work that has to be done that is sort of in the background to ensure that everything runs smoothly and is in order for the approvals of the state and federal and, and all the rest of it. It just boggles the mind. And I thank them very much for their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. So if no one else has something, I just want to read part of this letter for Mr. Mosher and Ms. Timmins, who are participating over the phone and for people at home who don't have a copy of it. It says, "It has been determined through follow-up visits at the Nashua School District for the last remaining findings that all areas of non-compliance have been fully corrected as of the date of this letter," which is October 4th, 2018. "We would like to congratulate your staff on a fantastic job in completing the compliance and improvement monitoring process in a very efficient and effective manner. Your district's leadership was critical in actively streamlining this process in your district. Thank you for your continued efforts in supporting students with disabilities." So I think that says it all. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Thank you for moving me up on the agenda.
No problem. Okay. And I have copies of those for you, Mr. Mosher, and you, Ms. Timmins.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Okay, moving right along. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to be removed from the consent agenda? I don't see any hands, so I am willing to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
On the motion to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Corino votes yes. Ms. Hoenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmins?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. We have no items removed. And the next item is communications outside the consent agenda. Does anyone have a communication outside the consent agenda? I see no hands. So the next item is public question comment period, limited to items on this agenda. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments regarding the agenda? No, we do not. Okay, so we are now on superintendent's comments. Dr. Mosley?
Thank you. We've had a great start to the school year, so let me just start by saying the last time we convened here with the board, it was the first day of school, and now we're coming to the end in September. So let's just start by saying I'd like to go back the beginning of spring. There was a motion made by the board to investigate the class rank study, so we've initiated that in September, which was part of what the board voted on. And that's kind of taking focus right now, so we're getting started on that. Speaking of the strategic plan, in the strategic plan, there are a number of committees and task force that are connected to the plan. And so we've actually started to plan, planning on meeting, but we've also done some outreach so to give the public and the board an idea of what has happened since the plan was voted on in August. Part of what we decided to do is that not just vote on the plan, but also provide an opportunity for faculty to read it, digest it, look at it. And so we disseminated it in August, redistributed in September. But partly what we wanted to do is to go around to different schools and have the faculty and the administration give us feedback. So we started, I call it like the share tour, if we just go around, keep talking about it, keep talking about it and stuff. So we've started that already. So anytime you're doing these types of outreach, you got to start early because there's so many schools and venues. So just to give you an idea, we've begun that so far. I've been to Main Dunstable, Title I program, Elm Street Middle, Nashville, the north, I was here today, and Dr. Christmas, well, today. So we're going to be doing that all year till we get to all of the schools. And I've heard some, some great feedback. I've taken that feedback back to the central office and to my colleagues, and we're certainly very, very pleased with that. There are a number of committees that have already started with the strategic plan, just a couple of ones that have already met so far, they've already been meeting. I know Donna has started with the middle school steering committee. I know Garth was wrapping up some of the work around the social-emotional pieces and the choose love. In the plan, there was also some opportunities for us to make some additional hires to our faculty. And just to give you some insight into that, in the plan, it called for four ELL teachers to be hired in the district. So far, we, more, excuse me, it called for more than just that four, but we started to hire ELL teachers this past year. So just to give the public and the board an update, we have, as of right now, four ELL teachers we've hired as a result of last year's budget. We also, thanks to the city and some of the board members involved in this, we also got some tentatively additional funding for ELL. And so we're able, we're going to be seeking and looking to hire an additional staff with our ELL funding. We also hired one, I'm sorry, we did not hire one social worker because the person declined the job. So it's no one's fault on that. We had a .5 social worker at Penachuck and .5 social worker at Fairgrounds Middle School. The candidate declined the offer. In last year's budget, we also made an indication that we were going to hire an ELL communication specialist. I'd say we're about 90% close to doing that. We're just tying up the paperwork. The board should meet this person sometime either next month. I'd like to have her come in. In last year's budget, and also located in the plan, we had made some, some recommendations and to pursue paraprofessionals for our kindergarten. So we do have four, we did hire four paraprofessionals this year. We still need four more. Grant Wright a position that was listed in the plan and also in our budget last year. We posted that position. That position has not been filled yet. Just a reminder to everyone watching this, we are working in partnership with the city to split that position. That's a .5 here for the district and .5 for the city. We, we have hired, we proposed two school psychologist interns. We hired one. We could not find another one. So right now, we have contracted out a qualified, an intern bilingual psychologist to complete just evaluations until we're able to find someone as an intern to fulfill that position of, of school psychologist as an intern. There was some discussion, I know we talked about special education costs, ways that we can start to, to save, not to think about creating some internalized programs or internal programs to address that, that, that need. Right now, we're developing, I'm pointing here, she's not here anymore, but Marsha Bagley, special education faculty and myself, we're creating a job description. I want to be very clear, we're not looking to hire another out-of-district coordinator. What we're really looking to do is someone to serve as a representative for the national, for the national public schools to start to engage and have discussions with other districts around forming some type of collaborative or some type of partnership so that we can start to look at creative ways to address our out-of-district costs and really make a difference there. So we're looking for a person to really serve as a liaison to get all of these various stakeholders here, not just in Nashville, but in other communities, to start to try to think of some ways that we can be creative around special education and out-of-district costs. I'm pointing over to Garth. Last year, we were able to do some very creative, creative and appropriate and legal budgeting around our funding for Title I. And so with that said, we were able to make sure that we have full-time assistant principals in five out of our six title schools. Did I say that, did I get that right, Garth? Five out of six?
All title schools.
Oh, sorry. So, but I'm missing one elementary, one elementary.
One, two elementary schools share one assistant.
Okay, two elementary schools share one assistant. Thank you. And that's been nice. And basically, it's New Sturles and Broad Street are just the two schools. But all of our, our elementary schools now have full-time assistant principals, which is really nice, and I want to thank Dr. McKinney for that. So here, we're very, very busy here. Doesn't mean we stop. It's been a very, just a go-go-go beginning of the school year. I want to thank the teachers, parents for a wonderful opening. I'll say that 100 times. We have our, we, every single day, can you imagine, over 1,100, 11,000 kids coming to and from school, and we still manage to get them home safely, we still manage to pick them up. I wanted just to acknowledge George for his National Merit Scholar. He was a semifinalist, correct? It's kind of, I don't want to talk too much about it because I know you're going to speak to it a little bit more and give some detail, but it was a little awkward, like if he were to say it, like acknowledge me as a national scholar, so we came up with a kind of a tag team approach to doing this. But listen, that's a, that's a great honor. It speaks to your hard work. It speaks to your character, and that's something that you should be proud. I know that there are 10 other kids in Nashua that...
Nine of them.
Nine other kids in Nashua. Wanted to acknowledge those kids as well and congratulate them. Again, we hear about the things that aren't working, but these are the things that go under the radar that are working. And this is a testament to our community, a testament to our students, our commitment. And, you know, I've always said, listen, there's nine, next year, there should be 18. The following year, there should be 21. That, that number can and should, should go up. We should not be satisfied with that. But with that said, it's not a question of, of taking away, it's a question of the expectation. And I'm just really proud of all the kids, so thank you for that. And thank you, Nashua.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mosley.
You won't make you that.
No, no, that's good. That's good. I do have one quick question.
Sure.
You said that we hired for para-prof, paraeducators and we need four more.
Yes.
Are those four jobs posted or are those, we need more next year?
We need more next year.
Okay.
Like, in other words...
For next year's budget?
Correct.
Got it.
It was, it was also listed in last year's budget, but we also listed it in the strategic plan as well.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So those are for next year. Got it. Okay, Dr. McKinney?
Madam President, we still are hiring paraprofessionals, so if the people are interested, they should check the website. We still have a couple of openings that we're looking to fill, so I just don't want to...
Don't discourage people.
Yes.
We have openings for paraeducators. That's the right title, right?
Paraeducators.
Paraeducators, okay.
Educators and substitute teachers, since this is...
Yes, we always have, we have openings for substitute teachers that people want to come substitute teach in our district. Our kids are great. Okay, so we'll do board member's response. I'm just going to go around the table. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Maybe at the end of this segment, Ms. O'Garrow or someone else could identify all the positions we have open, just to highlight them to the public. It can't hurt, right? Just a suggestion.
They're all on our website, posted on our website.
Pre-advertising, Dana, for the people that watch. I'm trying to help. If you don't want to do it, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I can't possibly list all the postings. We have advisor posting, coaching postings, sub postings, we have para postings, long-term sub postings, it's a lot, so I...
And that fulfills what I would have hoped you accomplished, is the scale and scope is large. So if you're inclined to want to work here and be with these great students, there may be a spot for you. I'm just trying to help.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
That was my segue for you. So Dr. Mosley, thank you very much for updating us on the special ed piece relative to, I was impressed to hear of you working aggressively, I'm going to describe it as working aggressively for that regional approach to special ed. I appreciate that. That's something that I've advocated for a long time, and the plan talked of it occurring five years hence. So I'm especially pleased to hear it happening now. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Ms. Hoenzie?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to also thank the superintendent for his update. It was very helpful. And I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Ead. I'd like to say congratulations for your hard work and for your parents' support. It's our families and our parents that help our students that don't always get recognized.
Thank you.
Okay. Going around, Ms. Timmins, did you have any response to the superintendent's comments?
Not at this moment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say quickly, congratulations to Mr. Ead and the other nine national scholars. Is that, is that the title?
From, from Nashua, yeah.
From Nashua.
Thank you.
That's it.
Yep.
Fantastic. Mr. Mosher, did you have a response to the superintendent's comments?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you, thank you to his diligence and trying to make a lot of progress. I also like to congratulate our students on the scholarships. That's unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Oden?
I want to congratulate Mr. Ead and all the other students who qualified for the National Merit. Also, I want to congratulate Ms. Gales. I went to the football game on Friday night and the band was fantastic. The routine was unbelievable. I'm guessing there was a huge amount of work that went into that.
Yes, band camp. Woo.
Camp Rock.
Thank you. Dr. Mosley, I have one question. You mentioned we will be able to possibly hire somebody else for the ELL program. Was that from the 70,000, close to 70,000 that we're, that we were awarded from the surplus that the city had?
Yes, that's what I'm making reference to. Dan's not here, so I think he's attending to a family matter. So I was not sure if we had access to the money or not, I'm just not sure. As soon as I get confirmation on that, we'll post a job and we'll see if we can hire that person. That was the intent of my comment.
Okay. And the four positions for ELL that we got after we submitted to the budget to City Hall, those have been filled?
There's only one more to fill, the one between the two middle schools, and we have that paperwork today. So that person will go through the next board meeting.
Just, I want to be very clear, and Dana's correct, but I just want to say, the intent is to get this person to the board. We just want to get them, sometimes what's happening, and it just happens with employment, they say yes now, and then tomorrow, we have an opening. So the intent is that we have someone in the, in the queue, so to speak. We've got their paperwork, they're ready to go, we just have to finalize it, get them down, and the answer is yes to that.
A matter of fact, I think this is the third candidate for that position.
Wow.
We've, we've had some challenges with hiring people for, in this case, for this position.
Because it's a split position?
That, and it's ELL. It's hard to find ELL teachers.
So would it be wise to have a special Board of Education meeting? We need five people there to approve that? I, I don't want to lose people. I, I've talked to principals, they're losing parapositions over the salary. Once they tell people.
Yes.
The salary, they don't get a call back. And I'm not, I don't want to lose, especially with how we are understaffed in the ELL program. So I would hope that the board would consider a special meeting. I'd be glad to come down any night or afternoon if we have to approve one person.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Oden.
Thank you.
I'll work with Ms. O'Gara and Dr. Mosley to schedule that. And, I know, Tara Kinsella, of course, because she runs us. Okay. Ms. Porter?
Just quickly, it's exciting to move into the next phase of the strategic plan. After all of the work last year to do it, it's, it's actually starting to happen. So thank you for all that's going on, for the people who are responsible for getting this off the ground. And thank you for, there'll be a lot of teachers and people to step up to be on these task forces. And I know that people do this work anyway, and it's nice to see how it's coming together with the high schools, with the NEOS plans, and everything's getting off the ground, so it's a very exciting time. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. All right, next is student member of the board comments. Ms. Gales, it looks like you were volunteered to begin.
Well, everything that George is about to say after me, and senior pictures are, senior pictures are due by the end of, by the end of October by Mark Lawrence. Powder puff applications are due by October 1st for juniors and seniors. Yearbook applications are due by the end of November, and I just want to say that I'm so proud of you, George, and good job.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Gales, that was lovely. I have a question for you. I understand that you did an academic-type camp this summer as well?
Yes, I went to the American University School of International Service located in Washington DC for a community of scholars program.
All right.
Oh, and I passed, by the way. Three college credits.
Three college credits?
Yeah.
Congratulations, that's wonderful. Okay, now it's your turn, Mr. Ead. Thank you.
She didn't take away everything I was going to say. So fall sports are under the way at the high schools. Also, seniors at the high schools are starting up their college searches, so good luck. Freshman class elections at National South will be on October 10th. And also, I'd like to say congratulations to all National Merit Scholar semifinalists. There were 17 in the greater Nashua area from high schools in Hollis, Hudson, Litchfield, and Nashua, and 10 of those were from the Nashville Public High Schools, so we were over half of them in the greater Nashua area. So congratulations to all the recipients, and it's great to see the national schools off to a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ead. All right. So the next item on our agenda is, there's nothing for the committee on budget, so the committee on finance and operations.
Okay, we have some contracts to approve. The first one is a recommendation to approve the CTE culinary purchase of refrigeration equipment to be funded by the CTE reserve account 91-2258-991387, space 71000.
Okay, is that, are you moving to, okay, I'll second that.
Recommend to approve.
Okay.
I'll, oh, you seconded it?
We seconded it.
Okay.
Do we have any discussion regarding the recommendation to purchase refrigeration equipment for CTE culinary? Yes, Ms. Hoence, and then Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Is there a dollar amount? I just know with our motions, I see one on the paperwork, I don't know if it changed. I don't want our motions to be bereft of dollar amounts.
Yeah, I don't have it in my packet.
It says in summary, that I have on a sheet that it was $7,733.98.
Give me a minute.
Is that the amount?
Let me see, I'm looking at the bid sheet, and it wasn't the lowest bidder because the lowest bidder did not meet one of the criteria on the RFP. Let me see. I believe the sheet in here I have has an item price, the total of $6,508.79, but I will have to check. I cannot guarantee that this was the quote that was.
Can we accept it?
I, I.
Can we say not to exceed, like, say, $8,000, because that would cover 10? Mr. Kaufman's making a 10 sign at me. So not, not to exceed $10,000? Okay. Can we take that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman? I'm sorry, was that all, Ms. Hoence?
Yes, that was all. I just didn't want that to pop up later.
Yes, that was wise. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I just wanted to say thanks to the food service people who've been giving us refrigeration space during the time where we were, this, we wanted to do this during the summer, it didn't happen, and they've been very helpful, so just wanted to say thanks for the space.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, that's an important note. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for the roll. Mr. Corino?
Okay. On the motion to approve culinary purchase of refrigeration equipment not to exceed $10,000. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Corino votes yes. Ms. Hoence?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
And I move to recommend to approve a contract with Mr. Harvard, Mr. Howe, and Mr. Dodge to write a CTE manufacturing curriculum for $6,000 per the memo dated September 10th, 2019, to be funded by the Perkins Grant.
Second.
Okay. And this, this went out for bid twice. The first time, we only had one bidder, so we went out and they targeted places, community schools, technical schools, places that might have people that could serve this well. And I will give Mr. McQuilkin lots of credit because he went and got two people who are at the community college, certainly know what, what students will be expected to know when they get there. And we also have somebody from industry, so, to, to know what's current and what's happening now. So I, to me, it was a very creative solution to not having any, just one person respond, and we ended up with, I think, a stronger team working on updating that manufacturing curriculum.
That's wonderful. Kudos to Mr. McQuilkin. I saw the bid go out, and that was quite a bit of work that they did. Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, to kind of piggyback on what Mrs. Oden was just describing, this is like a really good example of an industry-school district CTE-type partnership. That was, you know, one of the first ones we've done in a while. It seems to be very successful. I, for one, and I don't know how you do what I'm going to suggest, was considering we just spent $35,000 on a website that I personally think was overpriced, but I think this is grossly underpriced for the value that the district is going to receive. And I would like to know if we can, because they put forth a bid for a specific dollar amount, is there some way we can give them more money to perhaps embellish or a second round? They want to come back to us with enhancing it or whatever. Because this kind of money for the kind of program they're developing, quite frankly, to me, it's a gift.
Yes, this is.
To the, to the district, because what this technology curriculum is going to leverage for our students is, you know, add a couple of zeros, as far as I'm concerned. So I just want to express thanks to the folks who've made the proposal, and if the board has a way, and if they want to come back with a supplemental bid, once they finish the first piece of work, we'd love to talk to them again, is what I'm trying to say. So thanks to the folks who made the bid, they did that from the heart, they didn't do that for the pocket.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Yes, this is a grant, so, you know, money with grants is fairly tight. And I do appreciate, I'm interested in your offer to, to spend more money, because usually you're on the other side of the table with watching our budget very carefully, so that's interesting.
This leverages, like I said, a couple of extra zeros, so I'm certainly willing to invest where I can see the value of the returns. And I think I, this, we came on the board, I came on the board four years ago, that room was, was still, it was quiet.
Right.
We talked about shutting down the program and getting rid of the equipment. So here we are at the end of the tour. To see it resurrected in such a community-friendly and supportive way, I'm over the top and thrilled. And I just want to make sure we express that gratitude and offer future consideration if they have an additional program they think we ought to consider, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. Mr. Corino, I think we're ready for the roll.
On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Corino votes yes. Ms. Hoence?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. I move to recommend to approve the pricing from Central Paper for toilet tissue, paper towels, and trash liners based on the September 10, 2019 memo from account 91.1.222620-61428.
Second.
I, I think you all had a copy of the, the prices. We went with the lowest bidder, and it happened to be the company we're using presently, so.
Oh, convenient. Does anyone have any discussion regarding this matter? Nope. Okay. Mr. Corino, when you're ready?
On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Corino votes yes. Ms. Hoence?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay.
Excellent.
We also have a contract with Clearway, Nashville Adult Learning Center Special Ed Program for up to 15 students for $353,548.80 from account 91.1.021267-55694, and $3,007, and sped grant, 300, 7,000, thank you, 7,000, and sped grant for 46,548.80.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Corino?
On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Corino votes yes. Ms. Hoence?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, and I would like to say, we had an unexpected item on the agenda that we got that evening. It was on, it was presentation on adding solar panels to Dr. Crisp School. It was fairly lengthy, it was quite a discussion, but had we known that was going to be on the agenda, I think more board members would have come because it's been a fairly visible topic here in Nashua, especially with what the city's doing. So at our next meeting, it will be on the agenda that we are going to have a presentation. Mr. Weeks has said he's willing to come back, and anything you get in the packet might be helpful. It's a fairly complicated question, a topic. Matter of fact, after I left and was more reflective on it, I have more questions. Mr. Kaufman seemed to know a lot about solar power and, and what's going on there. And Mr. Mosher was able to add to that. I, I didn't have any experience, other than we have solar hot water, and that's quite a different thing from what they're talking about at Dr. Crisp School. So I am encouraging any board member that's concerned about this, it's, it's a lengthy commitment that the district would have to make to this solar company. So if you can make it, I, I think you would find the presentation valuable.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Do you know the date offhand for that?
October 8th is our next meeting.
Okay. And that's the date that the solar presentation will be?
But if it's not, I'll let you know, but that, and it will be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Oden, for reminding us. And I would also like to invite the community, if you're curious, because it's, it's gotten a lot of visibility over the last four years, that I've been on the board, the city has made some commitments in this direction, so this will help for the public to understand what's really behind that, how it's funded, and et cetera, because, like Ms. Oden said, not only is there a technical piece, there's also a complicated financing piece, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the committee on policy. Mr. Corino, you have several things for us this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. Our first item is policy EBCB, an amendment or update on that policy. I move to approve policy EBCB, fire safety as amended.
Don't move.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. The, the changes are on page two, and I believe that this policy was updated because of fire safety and large appliances that could cause a surge, like refrigerators. So, and that was the reason why the, the changes were made. And the changes, like I said, are on page two.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Any discussion regarding fire safety? Ah, Ms. Porter?
Thank you. Regarding the extension cords and power strips, I understand that it's for a fire safety rule, but we have many, many classrooms in our schools that do not have enough outlets. And so, once this goes into effect, we have a problem with teachers and their classrooms. What are they supposed to do? Where are they going to plug in the things that they have? They have, you know, their computers, their printers, whatever they happen to have. I know that in my particular classroom, I had two outlets. So, you know, we've got overhead projectors, we've got all kinds of wonderful things that we have. So, while this needs to pass, I'm pretty concerned about what's going to happen, practically speaking, for teachers to be able to plug in their things.
I have a comment on that.
Yes, Mr. Mosher.
You know, the policy is pretty straightforward with the recommendations. It also gives some guidelines on figuring out what the load will be on the extensions. And as long as the extension is an approved extension and does not exceed the load capacity for it, it's acceptable. So, that may take a few seconds to figure out what the load will be on the extension that would indicate that it would be approved or not approved. So, it's just a matter of taking a few minutes to examine the wattage of the devices being used and applied to that extension. So, it's a very simple thing to do, but at the same time, it just requires a couple of extra moments to figure it out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Porter, because I'm not as familiar with all the classrooms as you, on this policy, it says that power strips are permitted for electronics, like the computers and the printers and such. Is that not sufficient?
Well, I just want to, the ideal thing would be to have more outlets, I think, and then you would alleviate the need for power strips. And it's just something, I know we don't have a lot in our budget to do this, but you also have the trip hazard.
Mm-hmm.
So, depending on where the outlet is and where your device is, even if you are using a power cord, it could go across a high-traffic area conceivably. You're not supposed to put it under a carpet or whatever. So, just to know that with this little thing, there are some practicalities that teachers are going to be facing, and I don't know how we can help out with that.
Right. I don't either. For me, it's, we have to comply with what the-
Absolutely.
-fire safety and fire codes. So, it sounds like teachers might have to get a little creative, and I wish I had a magic wand to fix it for them. I'm getting looks from people in the audience that I'm crazy.
I think that teachers have so much on their plate, and to ask them to be able to take care of these issues too is a lot to ask, and to feel out, figure out what the load is on the, I mean, that might be easy for some people. I don't think I would have an easy time with that, and given the demands on everyone's time.
Just I agree.
Just can we assist in some way? I guess that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
You got me thinking. Is it possible maybe Mr. Smith or someone in the plant maintenance area can pre-purchase a bunch of power strips that could be given to the teachers if they need it, given this restriction? So, here's one you can use if you need it. They don't have to worry if it's approved or whatever. It wouldn't be out of pocket to the teachers, but at the same time, the district would ensure that we're putting a power strip that meets the criteria from the Fire Department. So, I'm just, I don't know if that works or not. We can ask Mr. Smith maybe at Finance the next time we see him.
Right, I'm wondering about Mr. Donovan's opinion about that, as far as with the budgetary requirements.
Well, I mean, he does have a budget for maintenance, and, you know, maybe they're 10 bucks apiece.
I don't know.
So, and it's a thought, trying to alleviate some of the pain associated with it, to say, "We realize you need something. We'll try and be proactive."
Yep. Dr. Mosher, did you have something?
I was just going to say that I think adding outlets to current existing buildings is a challenge, because there is a financial cost to that. And there is an opportunity for us to purchase power strips or maybe alleviate some of that burden. We could explore if there's some surplus at the end of the year to maybe kind of look into that, but just understand that we, I don't want to say there's a lot of extra money, because we are heading into the winter, and we don't know what those heating costs are going to be. I also would defer, I know he's got a family matter today, that I agree with the board president around, Dan Donovan giving us some commentary on that possibility as well.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to alleviate the concerns of Ms. Porter and some of the teachers out there that might be listening. As Mr. Mosher said, this is for really heavy appliances that you usually don't see in the classrooms. Your laptops, your electronics are usually low electricity. So, I don't really see this, you know, there's already an existing problem in some of our old schools with not enough outlets, and the only real, the only real solution to that is no circuits and, but, so this is just for surge protector use with heavy appliances, you know, really appliances that really surge energy, like refrigerators and toasters and coffee makers and microwaves, which you don't really see in the average classrooms. So, I don't, I just don't want people to have the fear that, you know, this is going to change things heavily. It probably won't affect your classroom, and you already have, you might already have a shortage of outlets already, but this probably won't change that, as long as your, what you have in the classroom is not a heavy appliance that's taking a lot of energy.
Okay.
Yeah, and besides, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Please, go right ahead, Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, we do have electricians that work for the district, and as far as, you know, calculating what the load is on any particular item, I think that Sean will probably be able to be a big help there, because like Mr. Guarino said, the electronic devices are not the heavy loads, and the amount of current that they draw sometimes is almost negligible. The thing that they are concerned with is, like he said, toasters, coffee makers, microwaves. Microwaves generally run like 1,500 watts or 1,600 watts, and that's like a fifteen-and-a-half load. So, I mean, these things are in the class of heavy users. The, as far as the, you know, the computer carts and the projectors, the projectors are not a heavy load, and it could be running more than one at a time. So, I mean, that's a negligible load. The same thing with the computers. The computers are very lightly loaded, and I don't see where there's going to be a problem with it. And it's very easy to have it checked out. So, and once you have it done once, you don't have to do it again.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Porter?
Okay, I'm going to read the first two sentences of this paragraph. "Extension cords are for temporary use only and cannot be used as a replacement for permanent wiring. Temporary use in the fire code is defined as less than 30 days."
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Porter. Might I suggest sending this back to policy until we can get a little bit of clarity from Mr. Smith regarding the wording and how this is going to affect our classroom activities? Because I happen to read it the same way as Ms. Porter, which would say that we would have to unplug a bunch of stuff if we approve it. So, yes, Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I was thinking that maybe we could have plant ops or maybe the firemen come and work with the principal and just take a tour of each of the buildings and have a report come back from each school, how this would affect them, either before or after, when we get through with, I mean, because it's safe fire safety, but, so we can deal with the next problem. What's the fallout? What changes need to be made in each school? I mean, so we can assess the damage.
Before we do a blanket change?
Yeah, well, whether before or after, I mean, because, I mean, you do want fire safety, but if we're going to make this change, we ought to assess what it's going to affect in each building, and then get plant ops to give us a recommendation of what we need to do to work with them.
Okay. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
At the last policy subcommittee meeting, Ms. Porter asked me to reach out to Sean, and I did, and I'm in the process of communicating to find out how many outlets people have, power cords, et cetera, to get that information, so we can see if it really is a widespread impact or just a few people.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. That first sentence where it says, "Extension cords are for temporary use only and cannot be used," that's existing policy. That was not changed and added into this. So, I just want you to know that that's already, I mean, we're not changing that. What we're changing here, I think it's, I don't think it should go back to policy. I think this is for just, this is for fire safety. You know, this is for the safety of our classrooms, and it's about surge protectors. It's not about existing extension cord use, which is already temporary, you know, it's already regulated here in the policy. This is for surge protectors. That's basically what it was for, and that's the only change to the policy. So, to send it back to Policy Committee, you're going to have us change an existing policy that's already in effect.
Perhaps. I would like to point out that you have crossed out industrial-grade extension cords. Three-prong plugs are permitted, and that is the change that is going to affect our classrooms. And perhaps that is necessary for fire safety, and I don't want to do anything that would put our students and faculty at risk. Having said that, I highly suggest that if we're having this much conversation at a board meeting, that the policy is not ready to be voted on. So, I would respectfully ask that you withdraw it and send it back to policy. Ms. Hohensie?
At the very least, if you're getting rid of that sentence you just read, the first, beginning of the paragraph should be industrial-grade extension cords are not, are for temporary use.
Right.
So, you tell which kind, because removing that sentence, it's, the clarity's no longer there.
So, Ms. Porter?
At the end of the day, I think that when policies come up for review, whether there's a part that's being changed or not, it's a good idea, it's a good chance to look and to have a reminder that this is a daily issue in our classrooms, and it's just a good opportunity to, it's just a good opportunity to check it out.
Okay.
I think.
So, I'd like to end discussion on this topic.
Hey, Moon.
Because, again, this is a main board meeting. We shouldn't be wordsmithing-
Right.
-at a main board meeting. We should be doing that at our committee meetings, and it sounds like the board still has a number of questions before they're ready to vote on this.
I just wanted to make the point that just because we remove industrial-grade extension cords are permitted doesn't mean that they're not permitted, because it says, "Extension cords are still permitted for temporary use," but. I will withdraw the motion, and we'll send it back to policy.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Was there a second that needs to also be withdrawn? I don't recall.
Yeah, Mr. Mosher.
Mr. Mosher.
He just did that on the phone. Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
You're welcome.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Guarino, I have tripped you up on your plan.
That's quite all right. Next, on our list is, "Recommend, I move to approve proposed policy AD, philosophy of the school district as amended."
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
This policy is from 1987, and it was heavily, heavily changed, because a lot of it, half, most of the policy was removed, and it was updated to conform with our Nashua School District 2019-2024 strategic plan. However, we did, the committee, the policy committee, did see that we wanted to add the first paragraph from the 1987 policy and leave that in, except for a change to the last sentence. So.
Okay. Any discussion on this policy?
What, yes, I have a comment on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mosher. Go ahead.
On that, that part, after reading that paragraph, I found that it was appropriate to leave it in, because it fit right in squarely with the school philosophy and the strategic plan.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I don't see the word citizenship in here, and I struggle with that. Given my opposition to the strategic plan, I will be voting against this alignment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. Our mission, it doesn't define what the whole child is, so I think it's ambiguous. Unless it's defined in some other policy, it's just a, it doesn't help the public.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hohensie. Okay. Seeing no other commentary, Mr. Guarino?
Okay. On the motion to approve proposed policy AD, philosophy of the school district as amended. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, two noes. Motion carries six to two.
Okay.
And I have, we have a old policy 1210 that needs to be rescinded, because, and that's the old district philosophy and objectives. So, I move to rescind policy 1210, Nashua District, School District Philosophy and Objectives.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. You can go ahead with the roll, Mr. Guarino.
Okay. On the motion to rescind policy 1210, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Abstain.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have six yeses, one no, and one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay.
We have one more policy to approve, and that is the updated form for our volunteers. So, I move to approve policy IJOC-R, Volunteer Assurance Form as amended.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Does this policy have a title?
This is the R, the attachment to it.
Okay, but they're each individual list, they're-
It's the application form for volunteer.
I'm just looking at the header on the page. All the other ones we have generally have, this, all right, fine, if you think it's okay.
Would you like to have a title such as Volunteer Application Form?
Well, yeah, I think it's helpful.
Perhaps amend the motion to include Volunteer Application Form?
But the agenda says Volunteer Assurances Form. Our blue sheet?
Yes, I see that.
That might be the title.
I don't care. Either way.
So, move to amend the motion to include a title, Volunteer Assurance Form as part of the title.
Second.
On the, let me take the vote on that amendment?
Yes, I have a question on the form itself, but I can wait till we vote on the amendment.
Okay. On the motion to amend the policy IJOC-R to include a title, Volunteer Assurance Form at the top of the policy, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero for the amendment.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one, and my question is, will this, if we pass this tonight and this becomes the new form, like tomorrow, will this affect all of the parents and community members who have already filled out a form for this year? Or, my other question is, those of us who didn't fill it out and it's sitting on our kitchen table, waiting for us to fill out, can, will you still accept the old form? Or will we have to now get a new form?
The change that we made, I believe you were at the subcommittee meeting, but the old form asked for the child's name, and we came to the conclusion that not all volunteers are parents.
Yes.
And it's also a violation of privacy to have the child's name on there. So I would probably encourage people to use the new form, but it's not going to affect the people that have already done the old form.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Oh, shoot, I had one more, and now I've lost it, so it's gone. We can go ahead.
Okay. On the motion to approve policy IJOC-R, Volunteer Assurance Form as amended.
Oh, wait, I remembered it.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm sorry. My question is, do we still, we, do people wishing to volunteer in the schools still need to fill out a separate volunteer assurance form for each school that they wish to volunteer in?
I don't actually know. I don't think so.
Because right now, I've, the way it has been explained to me, and the reason why one's still on my kitchen table is because my understanding is I needed to fill out one for each of my children's schools.
That's probably correct, because the list of all the volunteers in the school come into the HR department, and we check it by school and get back to that school, because we check it against the state website.
Okay. That seems like extra paperwork for everyone, but that's fine. Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
For clarification purposes, volunteers are subject to a background check, if I recall correctly.
They check their names against the state website. Go ahead, Ms. O'Gara.
Board policy on criminal record checks has a section for, which we have to have in there, about designated volunteers. Designated volunteers are fingerprinted, only designated volunteers.
Right, we don't fingerprint every volunteer.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So these volunteers are not subject to that part of the policy, or is that what you're saying?
All Nashua School District volunteers fill out this form. In addition, if the principal of the building, in looking at the criminal record check board policy, determines that that volunteer falls as a designated volunteer, then they send the HR department a separate form and let us know that they're coming down to be fingerprinted.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just looking for clarification, so the folks at home watching would understand, depending upon your level of volunteering, your responsibilities, there may or may not be a background check. So, just so you know, folks, so. And does the volunteer have to pay for that?
No.
Okay, so that's further reason for you to volunteer, so thank you.
I got that strained out, too. Yes. Okay. Now, I believe we're ready for the vote. I apologize for the delay.
All right. On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. I believe that is the last item on the agenda for the Policy Committee, and I believe our next meeting is October 1st, if my memory serves me correctly. I can't find my schedule, but I went over it earlier, and I believe it's October 1st for the next Policy Committee meeting.
It is, you're right.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Guarino. The Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, I don't have any bullet points for you this evening. Do you have something?
Sure.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, so we met on September 9th, and we had some wonderful updates on things that happened during the summer. For example, there was the Nashua School District, Nashua Public Library Summer Reading Partnership. We got a great update on that. We had Mrs. Fulton from Dr. Crisp, Mrs. Bolio from Charlotte, and Mrs. Holmes, a kindergarten teacher from Charlotte, to update us on the Summer Kindergarten Institute. It was great, they do great work. We learned about the new teacher orientation, the new Para Academy, we got our next edition of the Curriculum Chronicle, and we also had a preliminary information on assessments, and that will continue to be discussed at our next meeting, which is on October 7th at 5:30 right here.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Porter. And you're up again for the Committee on Human Resources.
I am, and so we met at 6 o'clock today, before that, so I'd like to suspend the rules so that we can approve some things, our personnel recommendations.
Second.
Okay.
On the, on the, whoops. On the motion to suspend the rules, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. The first thing, we have policy GCOA, Evaluation of Athletic Coaches. I move to approve this policy with the changes that were made.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding this policy, this motion? Mr. Kaufman?
Just a point of order, does it need to go to policy afterwards?
No, it does not. I believe we decided earlier this year that it would not bounce from committee to committee to committee before it came here. Tom, okay? Any other discussion? Seeing none? Okay, so it's policy DCOA.
No, GCOA.
No.
GCOA.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
She isn't guy.
You ready? You ready for the roll? And the motion to approve GCOA, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. I move to accept the Personnel Recommendations Revised dated September 18th, 2019.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I don't see any, so go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve Personnel Recommendations Revised, September 18th, 2019, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, and the last thing that we did in this meeting does not require a motion or a vote, but everyone has a list of the non-affiliated raises for fiscal year 20, and you'll notice that all of these positions got a 2.5 increase equally across all positions. It is effective July 1st, 2019, and it will be retroactive, so that's just for your information. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to make a motion to increase the, the rate for the TIA's to 5% this year, and if I can get a second, I'd like to explain my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Hold on, to, to increase the rate for the TIA's?
Is to 5% this year.
5% for fiscal year 2020?
Yes.
Also retroactive to July 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
What is a TIA?
Technology.
I'll explain if I may.
Can you spell it?
T-I-A, technology, information.
Integration.
I don't know.
Integration.
The assistance, yeah.
P-I-A.
Good job.
So, if I may explain, I remember when I first came on the board, we actually had a presentation of for and by the TIA's. These are seven people who work strictly in the elementary, are there eight now? So this is only seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, there's seven people listed. Is there an eighth one that's not grouped? So my intent is for all TIA's, I'm looking at a list of seven.
Okay, so your motion says TIA's, it doesn't say only so many TIA's, so I think we're covered.
And that was from Mr. Marku waving eight fingers in case people wondered where that adjustment came from. As I understand it, these are, they work in the elementary schools, they essentially deliver the, deliver the computer-related instruction to our elementary school students. They are not certified teachers, yet in my understanding, the only thing they don't do is develop curriculum. Everything else, I believe they do. I don't know if they do assessments or not. No assessments and no curriculum development, but they are our front line on technology in the district, in the elementary school, and I believe that this particular function deserves recognition in, in this small matter. I think incrementally, we're talking perhaps about $3,000 in total.
Any discussion regarding this? Any response from administration regarding how this is going to affect us? Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley?
It's okay. Well, first of all, it's a very admirable motion. I would say that this has not been budgeted out. If, if this is going to take place, then this can't, it has to be done in a systematic way, in some way negotiated. I would agree that the TIA's need, what was it, 5%? Was it 5%? Yeah, but I also agree that the teachers need 5%, the administrators need 5%. And so there's got to be some type of, of methodology and rationale behind making such a motion, and I'm uncomfortable with it because I don't know what it means budgetary-wise and what that feels and looks like district-wide, and, and certainly I would not be supportive at this time, because that goes beyond the scope of what was recommended and budgeted. And if that's going to happen, then it has to be more of a discussion in terms of where that funding is going to come from.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Mr. Guarino, you had your hand up?
I guess Dr. Mosley actually answered my question about, you know, has it been budgeted out, what's the impact on the budget, and so he actually answered the question that I was gonna, I was gonna ask.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hohensee?
Thank you. So I'm sort of puzzled as to how the, the process works. I mean, I support the fact that we need the TIA's to be well-funded, so we get good TIA's. I have no objection to that, but I don't understand why this went to committee if the committee didn't vote and the board's not going to vote. I mean, I understood that most things the board votes on, so I'm trying to figure out how this gets exempt from board approval?
Okay. Ms. O'Gara?
Usually every year, we give you the non-affiliated, and you've already voted on the raises, the board has already voted on the raises in the budget at 2.5%. So we just kind of let you know that this non-affiliated group is up for a raise.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Guarino?
So, so these TIA people are already in the 2.5% non-affiliated raise?
Yes.
Oh, so he's bumping it up to 5%?
Yes.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Can I say something?
After Mr. Kaufman, and then you, please.
Okay.
Ms. Timmons?
Notwithstanding Dr. Mosley's comment, these folks are not represented by a union. They have no affiliation to the union. They are not teachers. I sometimes, I wonder why they're not. Personally, I think their contribution is substantial enough where I think they should be classified as teachers, but that's me. I don't fully understand why they're not, I'm sure that's a conversation for another day. So I'm just trying to give, these are instructional folks. They are not administrative secretaries, which is a lot of these folks. And granted, this, this, this population of people is, crosses everywhere.
It's a very diverse.
Last year, we did have exceptions for certain categories that the board did vote on, and I don't think it was in the budget process. I could be wrong. So anyway, I'm trying to give those folks recognition I believe they have earned and are, I want them to know I value, might be my last action on the board to help them. It did not go, it did not escape my memory for the last four years. We tried to do it before. I think we can find $3,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I can't support increase right now. During committee earlier today, we, we talked about a lot of the non-affiliated, non-affiliated members not getting enough money, so I would like to bump up a lot of people, I can't at this particular time, and I think it's fair across the board that 2.5% was spared, so I would not be voting for that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Oden?
Yes, I certainly would like to give everybody in the district a bigger raise. I look at the paras and what they do, our teachers, our administrators. I think, I think the intention is good, but I think the precedent of this is harmful. I think we have to make sure money is in the budget for any raises, whether it be small or large, and I just am afraid of the precedent this would set in the future.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Oden. I tend to agree with you, Ms. Oden. I, I'm concerned about motions coming forth at a main board meeting concerning financial items that haven't been vetted by the committee and that haven't been vetted by Mr. Donovan, and I would really like to have those discussions at a committee level before we have them at the main board level with Mr. Donovan not here. So my preference would be to either wait to vote on this, or I would not be able to support it at this time. Ms. Hohensee?
Can we move to delay this until Mr. Donovan has a chance to look at it? I mean, there's no point in voting on it tonight, as everyone pointed out, so we can just withdraw for tonight and delay to, and looking at, because if you look at the, the increases, they get the smallest increase practically of everybody on the sheet. I mean, their increases from year to year is $400 to $500.
I, I agree, and I think their pay is, is low for what they do, but I think that about everybody here, too.
I'm not saying that they don't, but it's just the technology is critical to our district, to STEM careers and everything, to get the kids started with good TIA's is essential, so.
I agree wholeheartedly. I'm, I am not questioning the intent, I'm questioning the process. So if Mr. Kaufman's willing to withdraw and discuss it at the next HR committee, I would be perfectly happy with that.
But Mr. Donovan is not usually there.
Not Mr. Donovan. Yes, if Mr. Kaufman were to withdraw, and we could invite Mr. Donovan, or we could get his advice in the meantime. Ms. Porter, you had your hand up.
I just don't want to do anything that's going to affect these raises going into effect, because they're already retroactive to July 1st, so I, I don't want to, any discussion that would happen should happen afterwards, but I think that I, I don't want to inadvertently delay anything here.
Gotcha. And my understanding is the board doesn't vote on the non-affiliated handbook, so that...
Right, so, but it, like, we're making a motion, is that going to stop things up? Okay.
No. Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I don't, so if this is just a notification, why wasn't it paid in the beginning of the year? The budget was in effect, it should have gone through, they should have been paid already. So I don't understand the concern about delay. I mean, yes, I believe our people should be paid promptly in all cases, but should this not have happened in July, based upon what you folks just said? If it's coming to the board now... If it's coming to the board now, and that's the puzzlement, it's here, it's in front of us, I recall we voted on exceptions before. I could be wrong, maybe it was during the budget process, but I thought we did it in committee once. I'm pleased to have Mr. Donovan weigh in on the impact. I don't want to hold up other raises, but I do want to be assured that this will be given in consideration by Mr. Donovan, he can get back to us. I don't know if it's a finance and operations, or if it's HR, can talk about is the money available at finance, this way Mr. Donovan doesn't have to be inconvenienced to a second committee meeting, but I would like to have it looked at.
Okay. So, a couple of things, the non-affiliated handbook wasn't ready on July 1st, it's ready now, that's why we're getting the update now, and that's why it's retroactive. On the second item, I think it's wonderful, I think we are all kind of in agreement that we should ask Mr. Donovan and then get back to this. So knowing that, did you want to table? Did you want to withdraw? What's your preference for your motion? Because I think it...
I'm certainly willing to withdraw, as long as I know that it's going to be placed on a committee agenda where it will be discussed. I don't want to hold up everybody else, but I do want consideration to that group of people.
Okay.
So I'm...
May I say something?
So I'm willing to withdraw my motion. Can we move this to finance? And, you know, because that's, that seems to be the question, is there money?
Right. Ms. Timmons?
That we don't inconvenience Mr. Donovan.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
I don't think it's fair to hold the non-affiliated raises up for FY '20, they've already been delayed. And I think voting on this now would get them the necessary raise that they deserve, and they have, and I think it's a disjustice to have this delay for any reason. And we can discuss at the next budget meeting on raises for the, for more, more money for a lot of these people, not just that group of people that Mr. Kaufman had spoke of, because I can tell you, looking at the non-affiliated raises in this group of people, they are below. So to hold it up, I think it's an injustice for these people, and I think we should vote on it tonight.
For clarity, Ms. Timmons, whether we vote on Mr. Kaufman's motion regarding the TIA's this evening, whether we vote on it or we don't vote on it, everyone still in the non-affiliated will get 2.5%. The question is, do we give the TIA's extra?
And I'm saying at the next budget meeting, we should think about that at that time. But now, this 2.5% raises that everyone is getting, it's fair at this time, and I think we should vote on that.
Okay. So, Mr. Kaufman, it sounds like you don't have wide support for voting this evening. Ms. Hoenzie?
Well, I thought we weren't voting, period, this was just informative, so I don't think there is a vote.
Yes, we would only be voting on Mr. Kaufman's motion.
Correct.
Just for the TIA's, everybody else gets their raise. The TIA's also get a 2.5% raise, everybody gets a 2.5% raise, no matter what we do tonight.
And I'm happy to withdraw my second, and I'd like to point out that I think Mr. Donovan will be able to confirm, is when we lose, say, an assistant principal and hire a new one, oftentimes there's a differential between $3,000 and $5,000 from, you know, a vested employee to a new hire. So hopefully, he'll be able to find the money in the budget, but I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
So, I'll withdraw my, my motion, I would ask that, Ms. Oden, you place this on the next Finance and Operations Committee, this way Mr. Donovan can speak to it. And just for clarification, for the employees in the non-affiliated group, when will they receive this two and a half, oh, when will all the people in the...
Everyone, yeah.
Non-affiliated receive this two and a half? What paycheck will it be in, is the question?
It should be in the next paycheck, that's feasible, so there's, tomorrow's Thursday, it wouldn't be on Thursday, so it would be on the 26th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from HR? No, okay. All right, thank you very much. Now, we have liaison reports. I know, Mr., I'm sorry, I'm having a brain moment here. I know that Dr. Mosley commented on the strategic plan during the superintendent's comments. Susan, is there any other up, Susan, Ms. Porter, is there any other update on the strategic plan for us this evening?
I think so, I think Dr. Mosley covered it well.
Okay. I apologize, everyone, getting up early for a middle school is really hard. So, the other liaison reports would be the Joint Special School Building Committee, we met last night to approve some contracts to make sure that we have the investigative studies of Penechuk and Fairgrounds done in a timely manner. We also approved paying the architects for some of the work that they have done. We should have some reports at our next meeting on the 26th regarding the investigative studies that have been done so far, including traffic studies and geo-surveys, and I don't, I'm not a technical person, so I would advise anyone who's interested to watch the meeting or come to the meeting on the 26th at 7:00 PM here in this room. Ms. Hoenzie?
Thank you. I'm just hoping that this board brings, when we have the plans to, in front of us, that we bring it back to the board to comply with state law, RSA 1993. Section 1 says that the board approves the plans, and then Sections 2 and 3 refers to what we have is the JSB, the Joint Committee, and they follow through on the construction. And I don't know that the chair last night, or, yeah, it was last night, was in an understanding of that, that, so maybe you need a legal opinion, but it seems pretty clear that we, as a board, in a board meeting, would approve the plans. So just give some definition to the public for, I mean, that's where we studied, we sent it to them 16 months ago to review and refine and evaluate, but it comes back to the board for a vote, and then it goes back to JSB for the construction, is my understanding, reading that law.
Okay, so it sounds like you and Alderman Dowd differ in your understanding of that law, so I have said before, and I will, get some legal advice regarding that and be able to bring that back to the board. Regarding plans, we are not close to plans. At this point, we are at getting a report of what the investigations show, and then the architects and the construction manager will make some recommendations, and then there'll be like, public hearings and other meetings regarding getting input from everybody to refine the recommendations. I don't anticipate plans for, I don't even know, months and months and months before we would have that. So, we will certainly keep this board apprised, because now we're getting into the meat of actually having something to report other than we're waiting, so that's exciting. Okay. The other liaison report would be the Ed Council, and we begin meeting next month on the 22nd, I don't remember, but the Ed Council hasn't met yet this school year. And I don't believe there are any other liaison reports, am I missing anything? Crickets? Students? No?
Yeah, we don't have.
No, okay. Wonderful. So, moving on to unfinished business, I have here on my agenda the security grants, approval of the additional public school infrastructure funds for Broad Street. So the security improvements were completed on Broad Street, and we all saw that and signed that. I don't believe there's any other action to be taken this evening.
Right.
Okay, so that was just an informational. We've done our NEASCs, new business, we've done our special education compliance update. So the next item is a recommendation to approve, I'm going to make it a motion, I move to approve the anonymous $5,000 donation to be matched by the donor's business to the Nashua North football program.
Second.
And just, I'll speak to that very briefly. This is wonderful. I am always just really excited and honored the way that our community comes together to support our schools and our schools' programs and our kids, and I am extremely grateful that people are doing this. So anonymous person, that's a wonderful gesture, and your company, too, thank you so much. Dr. Mosley, did you have anything to say?
I echo those same sentiments, thank you. Thank you to the anonymous person and the company, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on accepting this? Okay, Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to thank the anonymous donor, if you're watching, for contributing to our community, and our football programs are very important. It's an important tradition, going back hundreds of years, over 100 years, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Can you please call the roll?
On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hoenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And that is the last item that I have. Do we have, oh, Ms. Fitzpatrick is very like, gently raising her hand at me.
Because I just want to acknowledge somebody before we close for the night, and I know it's public comment, so I decided to wait. I wanted to let people know that Tuesday at a state meeting, Lisa Gingras was awarded State Athletic Director of the Year from Hampshire.
Yay! Congratulations to Ms. Gingras. That's wonderful.
Well deserved, and that's, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you so much, I'm so pleased that you shared that with us. Okay. So, public comment, period, for things not on the agenda.
I had one more thing that I...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hoenzie, I didn't see your hand.
The election procedures from the students for the board representative, I know you say that we don't approve them, I think there's a disagreement about that, but regardless, I think in terms of comments, because I think sometimes we learn from each other, I'm glad that we've got them, and I know that it starts pretty soon, but I, I think that there's going to be some problems, because I think there's some things that are not clear enough, and I also think it needs to be in the handbook so they don't get lost again. Because I assume when we, when this passed the state in the legislature, and we adopted a policy that was back in, you know, 2016, or whenever we first put this in, we had rules, and they somehow got lost, so I'm afraid if we don't stick them in a handbook or someplace where they're easily accessible to students, that might happen again. But there's also a lot of ambiguity in the text, and maybe you'll find this out, you've got procedures through your next process, but clarity on a checklist. I know in North, you had a student election for student government, that there was too many votes compared to the number of students or something, and they had to redo it.
I don't, I don't recall that at all in any of the information, so...
The elections, I'm sorry, just one thing, I'm, please direct your comments to the board and not to children, well, excuse me.
Excuse me, we interrupted her because we can do that.
I'll defer to you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not going to allow unsubstantiated allegations questioning the integrity of our last election. I'm actually very angry about this, I feel like we have had individuals on this board who have been on the board for quite some time, who never questioned an election until there were demographic changes in the people who won it, and I am not going to entertain any more conversation that alleges that there were any improprieties in this election, because there's no evidence to suggest that there were. You asked the students to come up with some procedures, they brought them to us. You wanted to discuss it at the board level, and the Corporation Council advised you that it would be contrary to state law for us to even vote on or discuss what the students have come up with for their own elections at our board meeting. I did allow you to begin, to have your suggestions to the students and to the community at large, but I am not going to allow us to continue to cast aspersions on this past election. Our, our student representatives won fairly, and they have both been doing a fantastic job this year, and I really commend them.
For clarity, I have never made any racial discrimination. I've always talked about procedure, that is not my point. They have done a great job, but that doesn't mean that there could be improvements in the procedures, and I was told by a parent that her son did not get a ballot this last election. We can't prove that, I'm sure that won't happen again, but it's these types of little things. A year ago, there was, there was problems because the form, the signatures that are mentioned in here, to get the signature page back, which is not in the copy, so it's kind of vague and ambiguous, was held by a teacher because the teacher said, two years ago, that she wasn't sure the student would represent the teachers. But this is a student rep, so it's all clarity.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Hoenzie, I am not going to allow you to continue on this, okay? I'm sorry. I've been very clear that we are not going to have unsubstantiated allegations about a teacher did this, and a student did this, and et cetera, okay? If people had questions at the time or problems, they can take them up with the school principal. But we are not going to go back two years or one year and say, this may or may not have happened. It's not fair, and it's not appropriate.
Well...
So at this time, I will end discussion on this topic. Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
I would like to offer the, some feedback on the proposal?
No.
It's incomplete. There's no date, we don't know when the election will be held, we don't know who's going to conduct it.
Perhaps it can be...
We don't know the qualifications of the candidates, and there's no commitment that this will be published in the student handbook.
We don't need to know the qualifications of the candidates, they're students.
No, the point is, the students don't know the qualification.
The students don't need...
And it should be, yes, they should.
Mr. Kaufman, this discussion is over. We are not having any further discussion of the student elections at this board, do you understand? I don't think I could be more clear.
You've expressed your opinion, I accept it, however, I protest, I'm going to follow Mr. Guarino's lead and object, excuse me, not protest.
So you're objecting to the ruling of the chair?
I am, and, oh, yes, I'd like to have a vote, thank you.
Okay.
Point of order, that's called challenging the chair, not objecting the chair.
Challenge the chair.
Okay.
Challenge the chair's decision.
On Mr. Kaufman's challenge to the chair's decision to end discussion regarding the student elections.
So just to clarify, a yes vote means that, that we end discussion?
No, a yes vote would mean that you support Mr. Kaufman's challenge. A no vote would mean that you support the ruling of the chair to end discussion.
Okay. On the challenge to the chair, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Oh.
Ms., Mr. Guarino votes no, Ms. Hoenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Absolutely no.
Ms. Porter?
Absolutely not.
The noes have it, two yeses, six nos.
All right, moving on.
End discussion.
Public comments on any topic that you feel inclined to discuss with us this evening. Is there a list, Mr. Marku? Okay, I'll allow it, please come up.
Adam Marku, I live at Fort Jalorie Lane, I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I wrote a list.
Oh, great.
It's only two things, but I didn't want to forget. New para-orientation was mentioned, and I just wanted to say, this was the first year the district put this together, Dr. McKinney approached me about it before school ended last year, and contractually we could do it. The feedback that I heard from paras, whether they were new hired for this school year or they were hired at some point last year invited to attend, was, they really appreciated the, the day, it gave them a good start to the school year, and I'm glad that it was so successful. I hope we can build on that success to mirror similar to what we do with the new teacher orientation, to give our new people... orientation, to give our new people a good start, because coming in as a para, or a teacher, or any position in this district, is unique, whether you have experience or not. And I think to prepare them as best we can, we can't prepare them for everything, but at least we can give them some tools and places to go when they're stuck, or some strategy. So I just wanted to highlight that. And I wrote down power in the classroom. The fire department was probably really glad when I left Charlestown, because I was a violator for every school year that I worked in that building. It is not as simple as one would like it to be, especially in our elementary classrooms. My classroom in Charlotte, when I taught in the front, had two outlets. One of them was near the sink. That's convenient. And as we've moved away from what we used to have with just an overhead projector, which I just learned about today, what an actual overhead projector was, we now have LCD projectors, laptops, document cameras, speakers or some sort of thing to go with it. Electric pencil sharpeners still do exist, and I had one in the monitor, and then the regular computer. So we're at seven things. And while I can understand fire code, and I have a lot of respect for our firefighters and what they do in the fire marshal's office, making sure we're safe, if you want us in the 21st century, then we need electrical outlets in our classrooms. And if we can have examples of what we can do versus what we can't, I think that would help alleviate a lot, because, believe it or not, and Ms. Fitzpatrick can attest, I had people call me concerned about the policy, so I called this morning, and we had a good conversation, and it kind of, you know, turned into what it did at the board level, and that's fine. But everything is technology now, and there is no temporary use of a projector, or a computer, or pencil sharpener. And you can't cover them with carpets. Did that, got in trouble. You can't run them up into the ceiling through the tiles and then back down. Did that, got in trouble. You can't run them up and hang them from the ceiling. Tried that, got in trouble. We're trying to accommodate the rules, so we have what we need, but outlet space is not convenient in an elementary, in middle school classroom. The high schools, they all have mounted projectors. The rest of us, you know, some of the elementary schools, I think, one of the best things that happened when the renovations were being done, and I think it started up Broad Street, so we missed it at Charlotte, was they started rolling in mounted projectors and ENO boards and things bright to the walls, already powered, so that was an issue. That is a solution, but that's an expensive solution. So I guess what I'd ask for from the board and the district is maybe, this is good and this is bad, and send some pictures for us. So we want to be in compliance, we don't want to fire in our classroom, but, you know, we need the electricity. And if we don't have it, you might as well just shut the power off. Now, Dan would love that, because we'd save a lot of money. But, you know, we are in the 21st century, so I just wanted to give that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markou. Thank you, Mr. Markou. Do we have anybody else who wanted to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, board member comments, I will go around the circle. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. What I've done is I've prepared sort of like a farewell address to the district. I realize it's September, but I have a lot to say, and I'm going to segment it over the next couple of meetings, since we only meet once a month. So first, let me say thank you to the voters of Nashua for giving me the opportunity to serve on the Nashua Board of Education. To the parents and students of the school district, speak up and demand your rights. You have way more power than you think you do. Parents, you have the right to opt out of curriculum you disagree with. Document everything and follow established process. Remember that the Board of Education is the court of last resort, and you have the right to bring-
Point of order.
-your concerns to their attention.
Mr. Kaufman?
I will not be interrupted.
No.
I have the floor.
Point, she did a point of order.
She is allowed to make a point of order.
Have you withdrawn from the election?
I don't know that I'm going to be elected, and-
Excuse me.
No, I have not withdrawn. This is not, no.
I do this as a political speech. This is part of campaigning.
I'm not campaigning.
Expressing yourself, no.
I have every right to express my-
This is inappropriate at this time.
I disagree. My message here is for the next Board of Education. I cannot deliver that. I have no vehicle to reach them. This has nothing to do about my, look, I wish, there are some, I don't even want to say it. I would just like to finish my statement, please.
How long is your statement, Mr. Kaufman?
It's a single, one-only page. It should take three or four minutes to read.
Oh, my goodness. I-
People do it all the time.
This is inappropriate.
I would like, listen.
I'm asking, I have the, you're going to waste all the time not giving me the time.
Can I rule on her point of order, please?
Sure.
I mean, it's not advisable to argue with me when I'm trying to make a decision on a point of order that may or may not go in your favor. I tend to agree with Ms. Oden. I know it's election season, but we're supposed to be here talking about the issues that affect the district now. However, you do have First Amendment rights, and you have your time, but I will not let this go on endlessly. One page-
No, that's it, that's all I have. There's nothing on the back.
Find yourself, please. Thank you. And I am going to respectfully ask all board members to refrain from campaigning or stump speeches during our meetings, because that's not what our meetings are for. There are plenty of other opportunities to get your message out. Okay. Continue.
Thank you. To the 2,000 district employees, including teachers, departmental administrators, professionals, and support staff, thank you. Without your dedication and professionalism, the district would not function. Although I am running for reelection, I want to share the following with the future board.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Yes, Ms. Porter.
Inappropriate.
He just mentioned the election.
And the next sentence said, "I want to share the following with the future board." It's not directed to anybody else. It's people-
Listen, so here's the thing. Mr. Kaufman has the First Amendment rights to make his board comments. If he chooses to use this time to talk about whatever message, election, et cetera, instead of things that are happening in the district, or that he wants people to be aware of in the district, he has the right to do that. However, he doesn't have the right to speak for 10 or 15 minutes.
I'm not going, well, you consumed it.
So let's let him just finish, and then Ms. Hohensie will have the right to make her comments, and then, well, Ms. Timmons, and then Mr. Guarino, and so on and so forth. And we won't forget me at the end, okay? Okay.
So again, these comments are directed at the future board. First and foremost, I'm going to try and look at the public. Don't be deceived, like me, by the false projection of accommodating and collaborative personalities. In a few months, the collaborative moments will vanish, and true selves will be revealed. Number two, we often hear about students bullying students. Unfortunately, there are board members that bully other board members. Don't believe me, just review the board emails. There are also administrators that bully board members, members of the public, and their colleagues. Don't believe me, just look at the high turnover rate of principals, assistant principals, and administrative staff. Watch out for board members that make excuses for the acts of others, instead of holding them accountable for their deeds. Be mindful that you represent those that have little or no voice. This includes students, parents, taxpayers, and a few employees. You will primarily interact with the superintendent, his two assistant superintendents, HR director, chief operating officer, and two administrative assistants. Visiting and meeting with directors, principals, and teachers is a rarity. Nearly all employees are under seven union contracts. Your involvement in employment issues will be the occasional grievance and union contract negotiations. Seven, read and review everything. Review the historical list of motions and meeting minutes on the website. Ask questions, perform your due diligence. If you need more information, make a motion to table. Number eight, learn parliamentary procedure and use parliamentary rules to ensure meetings are conducted transparently and fairly. Be especially mindful of the use of non-public and non-meetings with attorneys. Nine, learn the provisions of the New Hampshire Right to Know law. Read the Attorney General's memo. Get training from Right to Know New Hampshire or the Attorney General. Why? Because I believe that corporate counsel's advice on the Right to Know law is seriously flawed. Number 10, become familiar with all board policies, particularly those that govern board process. Find them in the B category. 11, the board majority is the ultimate and legal authority the superintendent works for and is accountable to the board. The superintendent is legally and ethically required to adhere to all state and federal laws, state education, regulations, code of conduct, and local board policies. 12, the board makes policy and the superintendent implements that policy by establishing procedures that are subject to board review and approval. And the last one for tonight is review all policy changes made in the last two years. Consider reversing those decisions that negatively impacted board process and operations, reduced administration accountability, diminished board authority, and/or increased administrative authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I do want to remind all board members, as I did in an email earlier today, that our own ethical policies require that, that we all agreed to, require that we not engage in name-calling or other types of disrespectful behavior towards each other. Thank you. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I think I might have been a little bit more brief. There was a fire drill at Penachuk today during lunch, and a parent contacted me with their concern.
Ms. Timmons?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was on.
Why is Superintendent Mosley laughing over a fire drill?
I'm assuming that's, well, I'll talk to him. I assume Dr. Mosley-
Out of order.
I, excuse me.
Why is the superintendent laughing at this?
Mr. Guarino. Mr. Kaufman? I assume that-
And you wink at me, and you smirk. Where are you coming from, Dr. Mosley? I'm ashamed of you.
Mr. Kaufman, enough. First of all, Dr. Mosley did not smirk or wink at you.
Yes, he did call on camera, I hope.
May I continue?
Second, one moment. My assumption is that Dr. Mosley was laughing at Ms. Timmons's statement that she didn't know her phone was on, because that was amusing. So, moving on. Ms. Hohensie, please continue with your comments. Just like I have allowed Mr. Kaufman to finish his comments, I would like you to be able to finish your comments.
Thank you. So the fire drill at Penachuk was unfortunate, because students were disrupted in lunch. I know it's not the purpose of a fire drill to interrupt the, you know, the people who prepare the lunch, so we have leftover food, and for students to have food and never be able to consume it. Because this poor student came home quite hungry, because she didn't get a chance to eat. So I'm just asking that you be mindful of that. I understand the blocks for lunch consume a vast portion of the day, but I'm just bringing that up, because I believe that my job is to raise concerns that are given to me by constituents. And no, I cannot prove it, it's only an allegation. And the second and the last issue I wanted to bring up is a concern about confidentiality with the sharing of private social, emotional information in a classroom. What happens when a classmate inappropriately shares some of this confidential information with his friends and family? It's just, it's something to consider. I'm not making a statement, I'm just, it's an aspect that I hadn't even thought about before, and I wanted to share it with you. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Oh, I turned it off. Thank you, Ms. Hohensie, for sharing your thoughts. Ms. Timmons, did you have a board member comment this evening?
Yes, I just, it's just a few things I'd like to say. I have eight kids in the school district right now, from kindergarten all the way up to the 12th grade, in various schools. I would not rule in their least interest. I'll only rule in their best interest, along with all their friends, their classmates, and the entire school. So everything that I hold on is in the best interest of all children, including the eight ones that currently have in the school district right now. We have, my grandchildren, my children have listened to a lot of derogatory things about the school. They don't understand where it's coming from. It's only coming from a couple of board members, or two or three of them, and that's it. I'm just saying to you that we have a good school system, we have great teachers. I just ordered a shirt that said, "I love our teachers," which I do. There is nothing wrong with our system. There's nothing wrong with the district. There's nothing wrong with academics. There's nothing, nothing wrong with anything. So I'm one that would really be concerned if something really was arrived with, there's something that's happening in our school district. And I think that our kids are very happy there. That's all I have to say. And I am a grandmother, with children in the school, not with some people that don't have any stake in our school. I have a huge stake in our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I just wanted to congratulate the students at Nashua High North and Nashua High South for developing the student representative election procedures. You guys did a great job, okay? And these procedures have to conform to state law. Our policy on these procedures actually are almost word-for-word state law. And it's all up to you guys. If you want to revise them, you can revise them, or you want to go with what you have, you go with what you have. You don't need our approval, our blessing, or anything like that. You guys did a great job, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mr. Mosher, do you have a board member comment this evening?
Yes, I have about 15 pages that I've copied over the past 12 years, but I wouldn't share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
But I say, I congratulate the students and what they've done, and I have read about the elections. I think that's also laid out very well. I think that it'd be very successful, and the kids did a great job. Everything, far as I can see, conforms to state law. And I want to say, have a good night, and see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Oden?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank Principal Richard for accepting the offer, or the request of Senator Shaheen to come to Nashua to have a roundtable with our students on vaping. The students did a wonderful job. It's such a problem, and it kind of crept up on a lot of people. I visited a school today and asked if they had had vaping. It was one of our middle schools, and the comment was yes. And it has, the student received a three-day suspension and had to write a paper. And to me, that's what it's about. We need to educate kids about the harms of vaping. When I first brought it up, it had to do with rewiring the brain, the young brain that's not fully developed. But now we're looking at deaths, and it's scary. So I want to thank Principal Richard and the district. I thought it was an outstanding roundtable, and it was nice that there were students from North there as well as South, so, thank you. My other issue is reading the telegraph from, let me see, September 17th, yesterday, where Nashua was rated the third-best city to live in in New England, which is very good for the city. But I'm very disappointed by the fact that the mayor did not recognize education as a reason for Nashua having been ranked by Money Magazine as a desirable place to live. The fact that education was left out just took me aback. It is one of the criteria that Money Magazine uses in ranking cities. We have two state-of-the-art high schools in Nashua. They are a regional CTE center with a robust- They are a regional CTE center with a robust and growing program. Students have the opportunity to leave programs and go directly into the workforce or attend a technical or community college. We have a high number of students who go to our state regional colleges and universities, and many who go on to attend prestigious colleges and universities throughout the country. I just am really disappointed that that was not in the forefront of his thoughts. And I don't know, maybe he mentioned it later in the interview, but education, schools is one of the reasons that attracts people to a city. We had a budget presented to us. I'm sure all of you have read. We have an Office of Civil Rights investigation being done, and it's around ELL. The mayor and the aldermen have supported Nashville as a welcoming city. We have somewhere between 65 and 75 different languages spoken in our schools. And presently, we have the investigation going on. The administration came to us in February with a budget, proposed budget. It had nine ELL teachers in there. The past two budget years, we have had exceptional presentations by our ELL teachers. We knew we were short on ELL educators by a great amount. Unfortunately, the mayor insisted that his budget number be honored, and all of those nine ELL teachers were removed from the budget that went to City Hall, as well as kindergarten paras after people had praised our all-day kindergarten. And eventually, after the budget passed, as it was sent down without the ELL teachers, we were given four ELL positions. And maybe after tonight, hearing we're getting more money, we will get one more. That still leaves us three short of ELL teachers and paras that are very, very needed in our district. So I just want to say to our teachers, to our staff who work so hard with sometimes not the support they deserve and they should have, thank you for all you do, and education is alive and well here in Nashville. I just, I don't know if it was just something he didn't think of. He was concentrating on the downtown. But I also want to say, I went to visit a school this week, and I went to Dr. Crisp. They are bulging at the seams. We are hearing that we are developing Henry Hanger, this Corvo Ruthier land, and we already have some buildings opening on East Hollis Street. Just the two buildings have, that have opened, Dr. Crisp has seen an increase of almost 30, over 30 students. What's going to happen when they open building number three, and then building number four, and then building number five? What is going to happen? I think it's time that we hear something about how the city is going to deal with these families moving in with children, how our schools are going to accommodate them. It's critical. This is our job as a Board of Education to worry about education, and I'll tell you, I'm worried. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Porter, do you have a board member comment?
So piggybacking on that, I think that, it sounds hokey, but public education is the backbone of our society. It's the basis for the health of our community, and I think that every citizen in Nashville, whether they have children in school now, whether they were a student here, whether they don't have students, it is our, as a citizen, public education should be a priority interest for everyone. We're all taxpayers in one way or another, whether we own or rent. Some of our money always goes to supporting public education, and, you know, that, that's the end-all and be-all of the health of a city. So I hope that we can appreciate everyone's part in public education, no matter who they are, your age, where you come from. It's important for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. And finally, me, I will be brief. I just wanted to thank the principals and Dr. Mosley. They've worked together to arrange times for board members to go in and tour the schools, hear directly from school staff what they're proud of, what's going well, what things the board can help with, and really have them be able to show off what's great about their school. And I've really been enjoying the tours. It's an aggressive schedule, but it has been fantastic. And some of the things that I have seen in our schools, mostly at the elementary level so far, because those are the schools I've been to, have been terrific as far as encouraging and welcoming our students and making them feel safe and secure and integral to the schools. For example, some I've seen in an elementary school, mirrors, and then under the mirror it says, "I see a leader," which I thought was really great. And just such a lovely thing to do in an elementary bathroom when they're washing their hands, to have that message that they are future leaders, or had other things as well. Another thing that I saw in one of our elementary schools was they had invested in hanging flags in the cafeteria from every nation that their students had immigrated from. And I don't remember, I didn't count how many flags, but it was over two dozen flags. And I just thought to myself, how that must feel as an immigrant child coming to a whole new environment, to walk into the lunchroom and see your country's flag up on the wall, and how you must feel accepted and embraced. So I'm, each school has their own unique feel to it, but the general culture that I'm seeing at our schools is just incredibly positive, and it makes me feel very optimistic about the prospects of our kids coming up. So a big thank you to Dr. Mosley and all of the principals and vice principals who have been taking time out of their days to let board members walk around and check things out. So that's all I have. I don't have any other announcements this week. Next month, I'll get a list of things. Okay? So with that being said, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Mosher and seconded in by Ms. Timmons.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Second.
The Greeno votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. We are adjourned at 9:43. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Have a good night.
Thank you.